I'm a student at Harvard.
I'm IT.
Cal Tech.
Columbia.
Our advantage? Support at home, plus great teachers and programs at Orange County Public Schools. Check out what's available for your child.
There are magnet programs, advanced placement and honors classes, and guidance counselors who help us choose the right courses.
There are dual enrollment classes with Valencia College, so students can earn college credit while in high school.
OCPS has programs for every type of learner, pre-kindergarten through adult.
You won't believe what you can do through Orange County Public Schools.
For more information, visit the website at ocp.net or call 407-317-3200.
Here's a question for every parent out there. If you could fast-forward 20 years to see how your kid's doing in life, would you do it? Well, we can't time travel yet, but we can see the future better with the new Common Core State Standards in our schools. They set clear goals for every stage of learning, and they're the same for everyone, no matter what zip code you're in. So you can be sure your student is really grasping what she needs to know to get to graduation and beyond. Find out how it all works at CommonCoreWorks.org.
All right, good evening, everybody. Welcome to the Orange County School Board. We're so happy to have you here tonight. And this is our last meeting before we get to our July sort of a little bit of a recess that we have for three, four weeks. So the board members seem particularly happy. That may be why, because our summer officially begins after the meeting tonight. Tonight, we have invited four teachers who are winners of the 2013 PRISM Regional Recognition Teacher Recognition Program to be recognized for their outstanding dedication and achievement. PRISM stands for Promoting Regional Improvement in Science and Mathematics. The PRISM Project is a community effort with business, local government, community organizations, and educational institutions across central Florida, stepping up to help the region boost math and science performance. Key partners include the Central Florida School Boards Coalition and the Florida High Tech Corridor Council, which is a joint economic development initiative among universities, colleges, and the Orlando Science Center. Teachers, please stand as I call your name so we can recognize you. The elementary science winner, Jennifer Zagarella, Chickasaw Elementary School. The elementary math teacher winner, Jennifer Basilarri, Lakemont Elementary School. And her proud principal, Dr. Brenda Cunningham. Dr. Cunningham, stand up, let's recognize you as well. I have to recognize also her even prouder husband. Can I have Mr. Basilarri stand up as well? Secondary science teacher of the year, Anna Stevens, Timber Creek High School. And her very proud former principal, John Wright. And secondary math teacher of the year, John Barnett, Conway Middle School. And his very proud principal, Scott Hanson. Mr. Hanson? Congratulations to each and every one of our winner. We are all so extremely proud of how good you make Orange County Public Schools look and what you do for our children. We have asked Ms. Basilarri to lead us in our moment of silence in our Pledge of Allegiance. Ms. Basilarri, if you could please step to the podium.
If you could please stand and join me in a moment of silence. Thank you, and if you could please remain standing and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Basilarri. All four of the PRISM award-winning teachers were recommended by peers or principals as outstanding in their field. They each had to write an essay defining their classroom and instructional style. Additionally, our PRISM award-winning teachers use cutting-edge teaching to inspire the next generation of engineers, biologists, mathematicians, and so much more. We also have a special guest I'd like to recognize tonight, Ms. Toby Allen from Lockheed Martin, our Community Affairs Director. And she is going to do a special presentation with our very own Marielle Malaro, our STEM Coordinator. Ms. Malaro and Toby, welcome to the Orange County School Board.
Good evening. We'd like to share a little bit with you about each teacher, and then we have the privilege of awarding each of them with a $250 cash award from the PRISM Regional Council, a certificate, and a surprise that they did not know about. The Lockheed Martin Foundation has given each of our outstanding teachers an iPad Mini. So as I tell a little bit about you today, please come on up, and we will recognize you as a group. So John Barnett is an outstanding secondary mathematics teacher of the year. He employs everything from jokes to YOJIBRA, a review technique that marries yoga and algebraic formulas to alleviate his students' math phobias, misconceptions, and anxieties. Congratulations to John. Jennifer Basilarri, our outstanding elementary mathematics teacher of the year, teaches at Lakemont Elementary School. Each day, she prides herself on taking her students on a mathematical journey and believes in fully hands-on math experiences with real-world applications for all students. Congratulations, Jennifer. Anna Stevens is our outstanding secondary science teacher of the year. She teaches at Timber Creek High School and believes that students learn by doing. Anna believes that teachers should be a guide on the side instead of a sage on the stage as students tackle inquiry-based problems every day. Congratulations. And last but not least, Jennifer Zagarella, our outstanding elementary science teacher of the year, believes that all students can learn given the correct amount of support. A typical day in her classroom begins with posing a problem that students work together to creatively solve using science and mathematics knowledge. Thank you. We hope that this program continues to promote the retention of high-quality science and mathematics teachers in our districts. Congratulations to all of our award winners. We're very proud of you.
Ms. Malaro, thank you for all you do for our district. The STEM Coordinator. And Ms. Allen, thank you so much for all Lockheed Martin does for our school district. You're a valued partner, not just in this effort, but in so many more efforts in our district, and we really appreciate it and recognize it. Ms. Zagarella, Ms. Basilarri, and Ms. Stevens and Mr. Barnett, the board has a certificate of appreciation we'd like to give you, although it pales in comparison to the prizes you just got. My wife always says flowers are nice, but cash is nicer. But we would like to shake your hands and give you a small certificate of our appreciation, please. Okay, at this time, we do not have a strategic plan update, so I'm going to go right into our recognition of our newly-appointed administrators. Superintendent Jenkins.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. First, I'd like to introduce, I understand, made it here from the 408 in just the nick of time, Latasha Ferguson, who was administrative dean at Timber Creek High School. She will now be assistant principal at Avalon Middle.
Thank you so much. I would first like to take this opportunity to thank Superintendent Jenkins, Chairman Sablet, my school board member, Ms. Darryl Flynn, area superintendents, Dr. Vasquez and also Dr. Diaz, executive area director and also my former principal, Mr. John Wright, Dr. Gabriel Bariel, former principal as well, who cannot be here, Mrs. Judy Frank for the awesome opportunity, principal of Avalon Middle School. Also, I'd like to thank my husband, and also, who's also an educator, and my sister, my parents, my children, my brother-in-law, my whole family, for being my biggest supporters. And I just thank you for this opportunity. Excited to serve the parents, staff, and teachers of Avalon Middle School. Thank you so much.
And since these meetings are recorded, I want to stress that Ms. Ferguson did not break any speeding limits on her way to get here. Next, I'd like to introduce James Russo, who is actually coming, principal in Seminole County Public Schools, coming to be principal of Liberty Middle School. Dr. Russo.
Hi, I just want to thank, I just want to thank Dr. Jenkins and the school board for bringing me over to Orange County, and I'm really excited to be here. And I'm really excited to be a patriot at Liberty Middle. Thank you.
Next, I'd like to introduce our newest area superintendent. As the board well knows, Kathy Pope. Dr. Pope will be my new chief of staff. And so the new area superintendent is coming from the executive area director position at Southeast Learning Community. That is Dr. John Ruzick going to Southwest Learning Community.
Good evening. I'd like to thank the school board for this tremendous opportunity, and I look forward to working with you, Mrs. Gordon, and Mr. Roach, and Mrs. Robinson, and Mrs. Gould. And also, I definitely want to make sure that I say how much I enjoyed working with you, Mrs. Flynn, my last role. And I know I have huge shoes to fill with Kathy Pope. You've set the bar very high, so I'd like to thank you, Dr. Jenkins, for your confidence in me, that I can fill those big shoes. And lastly, I'd like to thank my boss, Dr. James Lawson, for all of your support, friendship, mentorship. You were phenomenal to work for, and I learned so much. Thanks for your confidence in me.
Ms. Cadel.
You know, those of us who have been here for a little while, I can remember Mr. Blocker telling us that retirements were going to catch up with us and that, you know, just wait, we were going to see a lot of openings of some very good employees who have been with us for a long time, and they've earned their retirement. And I think just at this meeting, we can see we've got, we've got some holes that either, you know, principals are leaving our district and deciding that Georgia might be where they want to live. So, you know, Dr. Jenkins, it's always amazing to me the quality of employees that you continue to bring to us in the recommendations. And I just want to say congratulations to everyone. And, you know, we're all walking in this with reporting to different people. And, you know, there's changes. Not only are there changes for principals and staff, but I think every one of us on the school board has a new area superintendent that we're working with. So not only are some of you thinking, oh, what this is going to look like, but a lot of us have been reassigned too. So congratulations.
Ms. Gordon.
Thank you. Congratulations, Mr. Chairman, and on behalf of the board also to all of the new appointees. And I think she said she brought her entire family with her. So, but you've had great training under Dr. Wright. I also want to say, I think John is no stranger. We welcome you. You know, Mr. Roach and I, you know, we welcome you. We're, you know, we're old friends. But you were trained by some of the best, which is awesome, with Dr. Lawson and with Dr. Pope. And we just didn't want to say it out loud, but now, Dr. Jenkins, you're a great appointment, because we know that you were already doing the work anyhow. And I had to, I'm picking on Dr. Lawson, because you know he worked you to death, did he not? And that's why you have all of the board members. You're one of the few superintendents that have been punished that have to work with all of the board members, okay? So welcome to District 5. We're the one with all of the superintendents. One time, there were six superintendents, and District 5 had all six. So you are well-trained, and I love to pick on Dr. Lawson. So you're getting a good taste of what he had, but you always, always had walked beside him. So I'm sure that this election by the superintendent and approval by the board tonight will be a great one. You even look better tonight. Look at you, all grayed in the suit and whatnot. I love it. We love you, Dr. John. God bless you, and welcome to the district.
Just be glad she's not mad at you.
He's always been with me, so he knows it.
Amen. Ms. Flynn.
Thank you. Mr. Ruzick, thank you too for all of your support. I'll go easy on you right now, but you are awesome. And the other superintendent, I mean, the other school board members are going to enjoy working with you very much. So thank you for all the help that you gave to me and the district. And for Ms. Ferguson, it's good to have you from one school down the street to the other. We're getting that assistant principal in there. It's a big school. You're going to be welcomed with open arms, and I know you're going to do a great job there. So I look forward to seeing you in a different environment, but still one that's very dynamic, working with Judy Frank. And Dr. Russo, thank you for making a good choice and coming over the line to Orange County. I welcome you to District 2 and look forward to working with you. Dr. Russo is jumping in there right now because he's got a Liberty parent sitting right next to him, asking him questions already. So she's welcoming him and getting him acclimated to the parent base over at Liberty. So I look forward to working with you. Thank you so much.
Mr. Roach.
Yes, I was not here last board meeting. I would imagine there were some things that happened that I should have said something about. But I just want to tell Dr. Pope and Dr. Lawson what a pleasure it was to work with you over the last many years, really, I think. And probably the good news is, I won't be calling you and worrying you to death all the time, because I really do use the area superintendents a lot. I really depend on them. And John and I, and Maria, looking very forward to getting to know you and not work with you directly before. But John and I really have worked together, because he was with James. So this will be an easy transition for me. But I have to tell you, John is a guy that I've, I've really admired over the years, because I knew John when he was a principal. And I forget the name of the school. Was it, was it Grand Avenue? John was there, and I think he did something really spectacular. And as you know, I train a lot of teachers, and I use this example. Probably everybody in New York and Pennsylvania's heard about him. But John, in order to create a vision with his elementary kids, took them to UCF and put them in graduation gowns and played pomp and circumstance to them as elementary kids to show them what it was like to graduate from high school. And I thought that was the coolest thing, the seed to plant into a kid's head. And who knows the kids that graduated that wouldn't have, John, because of you in that particular event. But John's, he's kind of a, he's a visionary thinker. And what I really like about him, he's just a, he's got a good heart. And that's, that's something we've got to really, we've got to make sure we have in our principals today. So I have a lot of confidence, John. You'll be able to send that message to our principals that this is especially important in these days to work with teachers and nurture teachers through a very, very tough transition time. So I'm tickled to death that you're there, and you're already used to hearing from me, so it won't be tough for you. Maria, I feel sorry for you. Other than that, thanks a lot. Congratulations to you and the other candidates tonight as well, and to these wonderful science and math people. I just think that's great to have you all in the front row. That's where you ought to be, the front row. And thank you for the Lockheed Martin folks. I was out at your event, really enjoyed it. And thank you for that partnership you give us. And here you are again, giving out money and iPads and everything. It's great. Thanks a lot.
Thank you, Mr. Roach. Well, let me close by also extending my congratulations. John, no good deed goes unpunished. The downside of being an area soup is now you have to sit up here in the fishbowl, under the spotlight. And, but we're so glad to have you as an area soup. And I think you can hear how fond this entire board is of you and how respectful they are of your abilities. Great appointment, Dr. Jenkins. Ms. Ferguson, congratulations. You have a beautiful family, and I always like to have the children, because these are not fun meetings for little ones to sit through. And we're all parents, or so. Can we have your kids stand up and take a bow so we can give them a big hand? Because they've been wonderful. Yeah, and they're beautiful children, all the loop. And either you're very busy, or some of those are nieces and nephews too, I would imagine.
Thank you, cleared it up, five girls.
And Mr. Russo, Dr. Russo, welcome to Orange County Public Schools. You know what? No one has said it, but I think it warms this board's heart that we're finally poaching more and more from Seminole County Public Schools. And we're stealing their talent, so we're so thrilled to have you with us. And I always like to close with, and the board's heard me say this a million times to our, to our new administrators, these appointments mean so much to us because they signify trust. And they signify that we trust your abilities as educators. They signify that we trust your abilities as leaders. And most importantly, it signifies that we trust you with Orange County's children. So congratulations. It's a real honor, and it's an honor for us to have you on our administrative team. Thank you. And now is when I say you can take those kids out for ice cream, because it is summer. And our PRISM winners, thank you for coming down. You're welcome to stay and watch the sausage made, but I'd go celebrate if I were you all. And thank you for coming down tonight.
I'm a student at Harvard.
I'm IT.
Cal Tech.
Columbia.
Our advantage? Support at home, plus great teachers and programs at Orange County Public Schools. Check out what's available for your child.
There are magnet programs, advanced placement and honors classes, and guidance counselors who help us choose the right courses.
There are dual enrollment classes with Valencia College, so students can earn college credit while in high school.
OCPS has programs for every type of learner, pre-kindergarten through adult.
You won't believe what you can do through Orange County Public Schools.
For more information, visit the website at ocp.net or call 407-317-3200.
Here's a question for every parent out there. If you could fast-forward 20 years to see how your kid's doing in life, would you do it? Well, we can't time travel yet, but we can see the future better with the new Common Core State Standards in our schools. They set clear goals for every stage of learning, and they're the same for everyone, no matter what zip code you're in. So you can be sure your student is really grasping what she needs to know to get to graduation and beyond. Find out how it all works at CommonCoreWorks.org.
All right, let's go ahead and get going with the formal business portion of our meeting. A few preliminary announcements. I would ask for the courtesy of the audience and board members, please silence your cell phones and pledges, pagers, excuse me, or pagers. Any individual who would like to address an item on the consent or the non-consent agenda may do so by completing an appropriate yellow form, such as this, which you can get from the board table, from Ms. McGill, from School Board Services, the lady at the far left-hand side of the dais. Chair, I will call you to speak when the item you have signed up for is before the board. You will have three minutes to address the board. We would ask that you abide by Robert's Rules of Order, which means that we would ask that you address the issues in question and not names or personalities. And please keep it professional, as our speakers always do. If you have any schedule constraints, please let us know what those are, and we will do our best to accommodate them. During certain presentations, board members have a monitor in front of us, so if it appears as if we're not watching what you're watching on the screen overhead, it's because we're simply watching it on the monitor in front of us. Dr. Jenkins, at this time, do we have any changes to our agenda tonight?
No changes, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. With no changes, we don't need a motion to approve any changes to the agenda. We're on item three of our agenda tonight, public hearings. The first one up is item 3.01, which is to request approval of modifications to the Code of Student Conduct. Dr. Jenkins will legal be handling this? Okay, let me recognize then Ms. Fernandez for this board policy.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The changes that we have for the Student Code of Conduct are the changes that were considered by the board during a work session held on May 15, as well as a rule development workshop that was held on June 6. There have been no further changes to the code after those meetings. And the purpose of the changes were to update the disciplinary actions and procedural due process for suspensions and expulsions of students, as well as to make some corrective modifications that were non-substantive of nature to provide consistency of definitions with form and other board policies. Thank you.
All right, board members and members of the audience, just so you know, we have already had two stops in this process. Before we got to this point, we had a work session and then what's called a rule development workshop. So if there are not a lot of questions, it's because the board has already thoroughly considered these matters. Board members, are there any questions or comments on the proposed changes to the Code of Student Conduct? Are there any members of the audience who have come tonight to speak on Agenda Item 3.01, modifications to the Code of Student Conduct? All right, seeing none, can I have a motion to approve the proposed modifications?
Move the approval of the modifications to the Code of Student Conduct.
Thank you, Ms. Cadel. Is there a second to that motion? It's been seconded by Mrs. Robinson. Is there any debate on that motion? Seeing none, all those in favor of the motion, please signify by saying aye. Aye. All opposed, nay. Show that motion adopted unanimously. Ms. Fernandez, 3.02, board policy JCA.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The changes that you have before you for policy JCA were also considered during the, with the board during a work, a rule development workshop that was held on June 6. I do have Dr. McGowan here that will give you a quick synopsis of the changes. Thank you.
Good evening. The changes to JCA include addition of the capacity transfer, amendments to state mandated transfer per state statute, some language modification, change to the deadline from mid-April to late-May. Staff recommends the transfer window be reopened for a special extension from July 1 to July 18 in order for families to have the opportunity to apply for transfer for the next school year. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Ms. McGowan. Board members, are there any questions on the proposed changes to board policy JCA assignment of students to various schools? All right, is there any member of the audience who has appeared tonight or come tonight to speak on this proposed change to our policies? Seeing none, can I have a motion to approve the proposed changes? It's been moved by Ms. Flynn, seconded by Ms. Gould. Is there any debate on that motion? Seeing none, all those in favor of the motion, please signify by saying aye. Aye. All opposed, nay. Show the modifications, board policy JCA approved unanimously. All right, we are now on... Oh, you do. Okay, Ms. Gould, thank you.
Thank you for passing that. This is going to be tremendous. But in addition to that, I would like to support that we, that I move that we approve the staff's special extension recommendation to reopen the time period for accepting student transferred applications for the 2013-2014 school year during the terms of July 1 to July 18 of this year.
Moved by Ms. Gould and seconded by Ms. Flynn. Are there any questions or debate on that motion? All right, seeing none, all those in favor of the motion, please signify by saying aye. Aye. All opposed, nay. Show that motion adopted. Okay. Any other part of the script I forgot? Okay. All right, thank you, Ms. McGowan, for that. Appreciate it very, very much. Thank you, Ms. Gould. All right, board members, we are now on the consent agenda. Do we have any questions on the consent agenda before I go to speakers? Okay, we have two speakers on the consent agenda. The first one is Ms. Marge Johnstone. Ms. Johnstone, are you here, ma'am? Welcome to the board. And the next speaker will be Mr. Keith Oakes. Ms. Johnstone, if I could, let me ask you, ma'am, to please start with your name and address for the record. And then you will have three minutes to address the board. And there is a clock up there, so you can follow your time. It won't start until you actually start to speak. Welcome.
Okay. Good evening. My name is Marge Johnstone. I'm a resident of Volcoi. I live...
I live at 193 Beacon Point Drive. I'm a resident of Ocoee and have two businesses in Ocoee. We have resided there since 1997. I came before you representing the citizens of Ocoee and especially the children from Spring Lake Elementary. The community is opposed to placing Dr. Angie Osborne an F-rated school out of our district. I have known Dr. Angie Osborne for many years. We went through Rotary and from there I became involved in many different things for the school. First and foremost, because of Rotary, the children were supplied with bike helmets, dictionaries, and whatever supplies were needed for children. From there, I got more involved with the school and found out that Dr. Angie Osborne was more, was somewhat of an extra-special person on how she ran the school and treated parents and children that attended the school. They were like their, her own personal family. She made home visits like doctors did in the good old days, which she did not, which you do not see today. She made sure the families had enough food, clothing, and made sure the children got help in school to make them grow, feel special, and gave them some self-worth. This is still today her practice. This is why the school is an A-rated school. Dr. At, I'm very nervous, sorry. Dr. Angie Osborne is a member of our church and through her school, she was adopted, as I would say, when it came to Christmas. We decided as a church to adopt her school to make sure no one would be without Christmas. Dr. Angie Osborne's school was also given backpacks from the Stars program through her community involvement and church. This continues to be the case today. Dr. Angie Osborne has no picnic keeping this school an A-rated school. Where the school is located, there's a lot of struggling families. During these economic times, some of its residents have lost their homes and were living in cars. But she still made sure the children got something to eat and something, and some she picked up and drove to school and made sure they had clothing on their back. Dr. Angie Osborne, as a result of how she cares, she knows that every student by name and their family history. Having said all that, the students are facing scary times. They are being moved to a new school. They're going to be bused out of the area to go to school, and most of them have never been bused before. A large part of the staff from Spring Lake is fairly new within a year. Dr. Angie Osborne has already started a major cleanup in the Claricona School. My question to you is why would you remove Dr. Angie Osborne out at this critical time? That makes no sense. With this decision you are making, I'm out of time. Okay.
Ms. Johnstone, you are, but can you wrap up in about 15 seconds?
Uh, I don't know if I can, but with this decision-making, it will be high risk of having Spring Lake Elementary an F-rated school. I mean, I gotta cut that short. But the area you are dealing with is not an affluent area by any means. If you as a board don't know this area, please take a ride and have a look at it. It's not a well-to-do area. So her job she's done there is an incredible job. Our job as a community should be to take care of those children. They can't speak for themselves. We need to do that for them. This is not a time to move her.
Okay. Thank you, Ms. Johnstone.
Okay, thank you.
Our next speaker is Mr. Keith Oakes. Mr. Oakes, again, if you could start with your name and address, sir?
Yeah, I'm Keith Oakes. I'm speaking as, I guess I'm in charge of the union for the parents from the area. We're not happy, okay? You're moving to school, that's tough enough.
Mr. Oakes, can I have you give your address before we start the clock?
1215 Russell Drive. I live half a mile from the school, Ocoee. I met Ms. Moore when I graduated PC support. I went to Westside. My cousin's was in Orlando. Graduated Evan '79. As far as bad schools, I went to Carver Junior High in the integration days. My mom, middle school bookkeeper, so we know about y'all's school. And we're not happy with what's going on. It's because I have friends that go to Palmetta because I work construction, Stucco, and that laughing joke because we done run another teacher off. You know, that's where the kids think of that school. Okay, now, Ocoee out there ain't no big way to go. It's, we have our own problems too. Money's tough. It's bilingual. I brought a Spanish student there to go tell the Spanish people about what's going on. We don't see why, we don't have a chance to have Dr. Osborne be there. She's worked us up so good. Okay, my kids, I'm a single dad. I had enough trouble finding, you know, a place for school, and I'm here having to educate them. Well, Dr. Osborne said I ought to get back and get me some schooling. Okay, I'm a construction worker. I had to work. Okay, I went to Westside Tech, and now I've been applied at the undergraduate program at UCF. Okay, to go from I couldn't type to where now I'm going to have a future that I can take care of my kids, it's all because of Dr. Osborne. And y'all just send her up out there, it's going to help that area good. But what about us people of Ocoee? We gotta be stuck with somebody else that we're not comfortable, stuck is not a good word to say, putting other people around. I know you have to move things. But Mama saw things go from school to school, and y'all have already got it written and signed off who's in there. You just want to stamp it and gavel it through. And that's wrong. I have to report to my church. I have to talk to all the people in my area. Those flyers are what I handed out. My kids printed them up. You got kids wanting to make sure that principal's still there. So you people are sitting in there and you ain't hearing what I'm saying. I still got another minute left. But I've said my piece, and I think anything's just going to be kicking in the... But just when you think about it, think about Ocoee. Think about the people that's going to be suffering just because y'all are up there thinking it's going to help this area. Yeah, you might be right, okay? But in the long run, what's it worth it? You know, these kids, this is the first time that this school, we're going to have a new school. Mama worked in the cafeterias at Meadow Brook when I was here in the 70s. And the woman that was at her funeral this year was in the cafeteria of Spring Lake in the 70s and 80s from day one. And it was hard to see the school being tore down. And now we've got the promise of a new one, but we don't have our leader. And that's just wrong. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Mr. Oakes. Do we have any other speakers on the consent agenda items? All right, Dr. Jenkins, did you want to make any comment on this issue, ma'am?
I'm happy to, Mr. Chairman. Couple of things I would love for those in the audience and eventually on the broadcast to be very clear on. First of all, when area superintendents sit down and look at the needs of the district as a whole, they have to make some difficult decisions. I've talked with Dr. Osborne. She is the best candidate. She already has started making her plans. She knows what we can do for a particular school that is in need. And the truth is, she has been at Spring Lake for about 14 years. She loves that community. They certainly love her. We respect that. We will make certain through the area superintendent, Dr. Bill Gordon, that we get a wonderful replacement. The school will not suffer. We'll make sure they are shepherded through, whether it's a sitting principal or an assistant principal. In fact, he'll go out and get input from the community on what characteristics they believe are most critical in their next principal. But that decision is our best administrative judgment for the district as a whole, and we will take care of both of those schools. Dr. Osborne, while she loves Spring Lake, is already committed to and making plans to aggressively move to her new school and to take care of some of their instructional needs. It's a matter of decisions that we have to make administratively for the district.
Thank you, Dr. Jenkins. And let me also say that, you know, we certainly appreciate the passion of a community for a principal. And it's a tremendous tribute to Dr. Osborne that you do feel this passionately about keeping her. And it speaks volumes as to her abilities as an educational leader. That being said, we have a very large system of 185 schools, and sometimes we have to place that talent at another school where it's desperately needed. I can assure you though, on behalf of the board, and echo something Dr. Jenkins just stated, which is we will place a talented principal in that school, Dr. Jenkins well, and her team. And we're very, very confident that that placement will continue to good work Dr. Osborne has done. So thank you for coming and speaking to us tonight. All right. Thank you, Mr. Oakes. All right. So with that, board members, are there any questions or other comments on the consent agenda? All right, Ms. Moore, did you want to make a recognition of somebody with regard to an item on the consent agenda? I think we have some young people with us here today.
I did, thank you, Mr. Chair. We're just very pleased in Ocoee to announce to the board, and I had mentioned it in passing a couple of weeks ago, that the opportunity was to hear. And we have some students to talk to us, well, not talk, but just to recognize today that the National Association of Secondary School Principals and the National Association of Student Councils has chosen Ocoee High School to host their 2014 NASSP Leading Schools Conference. And I see, I know the principal, Mr. Floyd, was here with the students. And we're just extremely pleased with the work of the students at Ocoee High School. And I know it'll be a wonderful conference next year. And this board is committed to making it a wonderful experience for students coming from all over the country. And thank you, students, for being here tonight, to recognize you for all of your work. Why don't you all stand up for us?
And students, I want you all to know, this board is very, very excited that you're hosting this conference, and I think each and every one of us will make it out there. And I just want to say thank you as well. I'm an attorney, and it is so hard for us to get anybody in a coat and tie nowadays, even in a courtroom. So to see young people come down here in ties and dressed so respectfully is quite a tribute to your families and to your schools. So thank you very, very much for that. Ms. Flynn, I'm sorry, I didn't see you. You had punched your button, ma'am.
No. Mr. Chair, I have a question in regard, it's not necessarily a question, but it is connected to some of our capacity enhancement agreement amendments, and it's in regard to mitigation fees. But I'm just thinking that maybe now's not the time to talk about it, but later on. But I wanted to put that out there, that I did have a question to ask about that. So I guess I'm asking you, when would be the best time to...
You know, all those are on the consent agenda, agenda item 14, so if you're ready now, I would suggest we just go ahead and take it up now if it's on, is it on those particular ones or is it just in general?
It's in general. It's not specific to each one of them, but it is in, as I said, it's in regard to the mitigation fees.
Okay, then why don't we do this? We'll get to that when we get to the agenda item that we always have at the end of our agenda where we talk about policy level issues or questions.
Perfect.
Board would like to talk to. You'll just remind me and I'll make a note of it.
Thank you.
All right. All right, board members, I don't see anybody else queued up on the consent agenda, and we have no other speakers. So can I entertain a motion, please, to approve the consent agenda? It's been moved by Vice Chair Moore. It's been seconded by Mrs. Gordon. Is there any debate on that motion? Seeing none, all those in favor of the motion, please signify by saying aye. Aye. All opposed, nay. Show the consent agenda adopted unanimously. Okay, we are now on Agenda Item 16.01, which is approving our resolution for the execution of a series of bonds. So at this time, we need to recess our board meeting and convene the Orange County School Board Leasing Corporation so we can attend to that business. The first item on our agenda is approval of the minutes of the Orange County School Board Leasing Corporation dated January 29, 2013.
Move the approval of the minutes.
Thank you, Ms. Cadel. Is there a move to approve the minutes? Is there a second to that motion? Seconded by Ms. Gould and Vice Chair Moore. Is there any discussion or debate on that? Seeing none, all those in favor of approving the minutes of the Orange County School Board Leasing Corporation dated January 29, 2013, please say aye. Aye. All opposed, nay. Show those minutes approved. The next item is we need to request the approval of the resolution of the Orange County School Board Leasing Corporation authorizing the execution of Amendment Number 3 to Series 1997A ground lease, amended and restated Schedule 1997A1, Amendment Number 1 to Series 2009 ground lease and restated schedule and related documents. And before I take a motion to do that, Mr. Collins, just so I keep us in the right posture, did I say that correctly? Is there anything further, sir? Okay. Can I have a motion to approve those items as stated? It's been moved by Ms. Gould. Is there a second? Seconded by Vice Chair Moore. All right, is there any debate on that motion? Seeing none, all those in favor of that motion, please say aye. Aye. All opposed, nay. Show that motion adopted unanimously. There is no further business for the Leasing Corporation. At this time, I will adjourn the meeting of the Leasing Corporation and reconvene our regular school board meeting. Okay, we are now on a report by the attorneys, number 18. We have a couple of information items there from the superintendent. So now we're on 18, report by attorneys. Ms. Fernandez, anything from legal?
No reports.
Okay, and now a report by the superintendent. Superintendent, no report. All right. Board members, let's go to committee reports where I go to Ms. Flynn's issue. I know that there are a number of you have an FSBA report to make and other reports. Mrs. Gordon, I think you said, you had a report, ma'am? Pardon me?
I have three.
You have three. Would you like to go ahead and take them up now? We're on committee reports if you'd like.
Okay, well, they're in the packet. The Florida School Board Association Spring Conference that we did attend is 1902. I suggested, most of you have the package, but those that did not attend, I think the entire package is there. And 1903 deals with the Community Action Board. That report is there. And 1904, I really ask that you really take a moment and open 1904. 1904 deals with the Marzano Teacher Leadership Training. I had an opportunity to meet Dr. Marzano and his beautiful wife and his dynamic team. There were over 1,600 people in attendance from all over the nation, out of, all over. Every state in the United States was covered. And it was really very, very interesting to see him in action. There is a new evaluative instrument out. I highly recommend that you read his books, especially since you will be looking at teachers when you go into the classroom. It would be very helpful to you to know what you are looking at as a board member so that you will be knowledgeable as to when an area superintendent and a principal makes a recommendation for that teacher, you will know why that teacher received the evaluation that they did. I also shared with the superintendent and the executive cabinet, there is a revised Marzano Teacher Evaluation Instrument coming out. Most of the schools, they were on top of it. They were using it. I know that we used it in Osceola, and all they have done is just revived that evaluative instrument. It is not included in this report, but however, I have sent pictures that I took of the instrument to, I think, the area superintendents. And I'm asking Mel Miller Smith that she would put that little slide presentation together. I think you need to know what you're looking for as a board member when you go into the classroom. Connecting Common Core expectation to the ELL students through the Marzano framework was very exciting. And the art and science of teaching the Common Core, they have already done that, which is very helpful. One thing that I want you to know with the Marzano training is basically they try to get teachers to become a leader in planning and a leader in preparation. And this is one of the areas that we all as educators were weak in. We don't always plan what we're going to teach, and we don't always teach what we planned. But he teaches you how to deal with it if it's in the lesson plan or not in the lesson plan. Another area is trying to get to being an innovative teacher. I think you all know that the innovative teacher is the highly effective teacher. That is a very hard area to reach. Even though we have great teachers, the way that the system is designed, it is very difficult to reach that innovative state. We want all of our teachers to be there. So one area that he asked us to work in is to pair your newcomers with buddies. And as board members, you can go in and see when, even when we do a walkthrough in the class, even though we are not the evaluator or the evaluator, but we can go in if there are teachers that we know. We can give nice, not criticism, but corrective measure to that teacher as we go through We can give nice, not criticism, but corrective measure to that teacher as we go through and let them know, but you've got to be aware of what you're doing. You cannot criticize. He gave us a lot on decision-making activities. That's very important. And I found the whole conference that I brought away is that if I'm going to make it to the top, and I think I spoke to you all when I received my rating, you want to be joyful, but it's hard to be highly effective when you know that there are people in your school that are good teachers, but they did not get the rating based on the evaluation because they, you know, of what was happening at that time. You have several times to bring your score up. But the fact is, I feel bad, as I told you, as an educator, when I see people that I know are good teachers, but nobody has buddied up with them to show them how to reach it, how to make it to the top. So there were, Orange County had several representatives there at that conference, and they learned a lot. Osceola ended up being highlighted. One of our former students was highlighted at that conference. There were some stories that didn't kind of go quite right, but we didn't want to tell it all, but we know the real deal from being there and working in the county. But they highlighted a lot of teachers. But the biggest thing is, it is an instrument that can be used. It's an instrument that we can work out. It is an instrument that I am being evaluated on for life, and so are the teachers that have chosen it. There was a comparison between the Daniel evaluation, because some counties that were there from Illinois and other areas, Tennessee, were using the Daniel. So you need to know the difference. But in Orange and in Osceola, we're using the Marzano. But become very familiar with Marzano as it relates to the Common Core as you make your visits. I know a lot of you love to visit in the school and in the classroom. So make little, you know, little pointers and notes. And when you're making them, you're helping, you want to make that teacher be better. You don't want to be the evaluator, but you want to take that teacher to the top. And if you learn, they want you to speak the language. We need to be speaking in the domains. What domain are you in? What is it that you're trying to accomplish the more? And the board got to learn to speak the language. Ms. Cadel brought in several people at the Florida School Board Association that would help board members to understand it. But if you're not speaking the language, it's going to be very hard for you as a board member to be any type of evaluative person or even to even make a difference in the life of that teacher that is trying to improve within that classroom. So with that in mind, and the Community Action Board report is also in the package, I do ask you, we have put all of this on, in the board docs. It doesn't take but a second to whip through it. Learn the terminology. They want you to speak the language. If you don't read it and you don't know it, it's going to be awfully hard for you to speak it and to understand it as a board member when you go into a classroom and visit a classroom. So that's my report, and I thank you so very much for listening.
Thank you, Mrs. Gordon. Mrs. Robinson, would you also like to give a report on the FSBA conference?
Yes. I put, I just did some quick minutes from the Board of Directors meeting, and Ms. Gordon was there with me also. I just stuck those under 19.01, along with how you can access the actual agenda on the FSBA website. And then those of you who didn't actually make it to the legislative wrap-up, I brought home and put the big packet with all the synopsis of every bill that went through, had it given, put on your desk. So those of you who weren't there, hopefully, if you got that big blue packet, that's for me. And the conference was wonderful. Learned a lot of good things. And the best part was, we told Mrs. Cadel, thank you, thank you, thank you for her year of service. Now she gets to relax a little bit and enjoy it more than, more than work it. So anyway, thanks again for your service, Joey. And it was a fun conference, and we'll have another one in the fall. Thanks.
And can I add one thing? For those of you who are digital, the Blue Book is available on the FSBA website digitally. So if you don't know where your Blue Book is, you can find it on the FSBA website.
Well, Ms. Cadel, I'm going to echo Mrs. Robinson. Thank you for your service to the FSBA and for making us look so good, and you did a great job for two years.
Thank you. And as I said, over in Tampa, I couldn't have done it without the support of all of you and the understanding when I went, oh, oops, I'm on my way here, or, oh, oops, I'm on my way there. So when you become president of FSBA, it takes the whole team behind you. So thank you to all of you for all you did to support me and to the superintendent and her staff. Thank you for always making people available to share our successes with FSBA. We had Dylan Thomas there talking about marketing your website. And, you know, he was talking about taking it to the next level. And I said, Dylan, you don't understand, these school districts don't even know where to start if they wanted to sell sites on their websites. So he got very high reviews, and he took Mr. Sikowski with him. And so that went really well. And then Becky Watson, who is in our professional development department. Dr. Blanton called me on Monday afternoon and said, Joey, I've been doing this for 34 years, and I have never seen responses and evaluations like what Becky got. There, seven was the most. Some people gave her a 10-plus-plus. People said it was worth the whole conference to hear her story. So thank you all for making some of our stars available to share with FSBA.
Thank you. All right, board members, any other committee reports that I may have omitted? All right, Ms. Flynn.
Thank you. Real quick, Mr. Chair, I wanted to say, Ms. Watson was incredible. I can't tell you how many times I've relayed her story. It was really, made a big impact on me. Okay, Mr. Chair, I think you and I sometimes share the same concern over the capacity enhancement agreement amendments when developments come back to increase their units. And when you look at it, it's hard to say, no, we're not going to do it because if we don't take the mitigation fees as they are now, they can come back, and they've got good reason for it to be passed, but then the mitigation fees are lower. And, you know, realizing is that we take those mitigation fees, but I personally don't know what the plan is for them. I know they go into a pot, the plan is to be able to use them. But I know it would help me be able to help the community understand that when we have projects that come in for increased units or homes, that we're able to say, we're going to take these mitigation fees, and so many years they're going to be used to put an addition on, or it's going to be used to be built in this school. I know we've got a lot of growth going on in that Lake Nona Moss Park area. I know Ms. Gould has a lot in hers. You've got some in yours, Ms. Moore. And so I'm not saying that there's not a plan, but I think for me, I'd like to know a little bit more when we approve these enhancement agreements, just a little bit more about those mitigation fees.
Okay. Ms. Moore?
I would just like to support what Mrs. Flynn had said, because I know it's, when you look at credits on properties, a lot of times it follows. So it would be interesting if we could get some reports potentially in the board docs from meetings when we see credits for mitigation fees and capacity enhancement, whatever, staying within, in the regions. I don't think, at this point, if there is something, I have not personally seen any kind of report. So we could go back and look to see what figures are there. And I agree, the community is very interested. There was one we approved tonight in Akoi, the same issue. That would be nice to see when we finally get around to building the Ingram Road K-8 school or whatever it's going to be there, that those credits, you know, were actually attached to the building, so, or that community. So I would agree with Mrs. Flynn. It'd be interesting to see where we could go with this in the future, because I think it would help the community to realize when they're a high-growth area that these fees do come in, and they are to benefit their children.
Mr. Chairman, did you want a response tonight, or did you want to schedule that for the future?
Let me go ahead and let me make a comment myself. I queued up, and then I'm going to turn it over to you, Dr. Jenkins, for a response. Well, you know, I want to hear what the superintendent and her team have to say, but it's a great suggestion, Ms. Flynn and Ms. Moore. I'd love to explore that. I know I've had some conversations with Legal over it. I've dove deep on this issue. I've read case law, I've, you know, and what's always sort of bothered me about it is, in theory, those fees are, whether mitigation fees, concurrency fees are to alleviate crowding at that particular school or those particular schools. But I'm not sure that we really do that, and that's a complicated topic. So I welcome the suggestion. And, you know, my views in almost three years on the board have evolved on this. I've gone to the point where, and frankly, I don't, I've never really talked much about it at this board table, but lately I get a lot of developers ask me about it because developing's booming again. I say, listen, if we have capacity, I'm fine with them. If we have a school coming online anytime in our work plan, I'm fine with them. Where I struggle with them personally is when we don't have capacity and we don't have any schools coming online. So I think it's some, we should address at some point. Dr. Jenkins, let me turn it over to you and your team.
Actually, I had Mr. Smith come down in case there were a technical question around capacity enhancement agreements, so I'll let him comment briefly. It probably is best that concerning the actual designation delineation of those fees and projects that we bring a report back to the board, I'll get with my CFO regarding that. Mr. Smith?
Thank you, Superintendent. Board members, to address the question that Ms. Flynn is bringing forward, staff has been reviewing this for some time now and kind of struggling with the idea on what direction to move forward before moving this up the chain for further consideration by senior management. Part of it is what we term affectionately, capacity benefit areas, whereby, along the lines that Ms. Moore is talking about, when a development occurs in a particular area and it impacts an overcrowded school, there may not be a relief plan or any kind of renovation or addition planned at that time. However, there may be something that's on the horizon that we may be able to plan for. Currently, we have a very set time limit on how long we can keep mitigation amounts. So far as to date, I believe, Mr. Collins, can you back me up? We have not sent back a mitigation check. We have three years to use it. And as far, we have not refunded one dime to any developer at this point. So we've been using the funds. Since we've adopted concurrency, there's been some changes to our agreements. We've moved away from those very substantial agreements that tied us directly to improvements, because in the past, some of those improvements were premature or were arbitrarily done against our better judgment on opening or renovating or doing certain things at particular locations. So we've left it kind of very open-ended to some degree, giving a laundry list of improvements that we may make as a way to satisfy that condition of finding some type of relief. However, internally, we need to, we have been trying to address the need of what do we do once that fund is committed and then collected? And that's becoming a slightly more difficult thing to do as the capital improvement program changes every year. As you know, every budget, every year that you approve the budget, you're updating that list as well, depending on our funding situation. So in one year, we may have funding for a relief school or an actual school. In the next year, we may not have it because it's been moved out due to funding, insufficient funding at that time. And it may move back in based on the needs in the following year. However, staff is looking at this capacity benefit area where the mitigation, not the impact fees, but the mitigation amounts, the amounts that the developer pays above and beyond the impact fees, would go into this fund to help assist facilities and the planning department to either research, find property, look into renovations and extensions on school campuses and different things of that nature. So it is something that we've been looking at for some time. And we do need to sit down with facilities, and we do need to sit down with our budget department to kind of formalize that and have it as an internal structure. That would give you some reassurance and confidence that once we agree to these agreements, once we approve these agreements, that that money is going to be used in a sufficient amount of time to at least have an impact or at least address the concern at those locations that those developments are occurring in.
Mr. Collins?
We would, we can come back with a more formal plan. Right now, we do work with our planning department, and they provide us with a list of those, with the mitigation fees that we collect. And we work to try to identify those fees and budget those on the, in the specific areas in order to benefit those projects. So there is, there is a link between our planning department and budget currently, but we can bring back a formalized plan to show you how that works.
Well, Superintendent, why don't we do this? Perhaps you and I can talk, and we can figure out the timing of that. And I think at some point, it might be beneficial to do a work session, because it sounds like a number of board members have an interest in this area. And we'll circle back when it's, when it's a little bit, when it's ready. Okay? Does that, does that work for you, Ms. Flynn?
Yes, thank you.
Ms. Moore, okay. All right, Mrs. Robinson?
Yeah. I'd like to have us look at, and possibly, I looked at the work session coming up. I see magnet schools, and maybe this falls under that, maybe it doesn't. But, you know, the legislators passed a bill in the spring that, I can't remember the title of it, but it's innovation schools that allow us to, in a sense, make our own charter schools, but they're called innovation schools, schools of innovation. And I just would like to, you know, experiment with that and investigate it and find out exactly what that means and how we could utilize that to, once again, offer more choice. You know, we, we looked at a year or two ago about becoming a charter district, because that was also a possibility, and that just didn't really seem to fit what we needed to become our own charter district. So maybe this is something that would fit better for us. So I don't know if that falls under magnet schools, or it would have to be its own separate work session, but I'd like for us to investigate that.
Great suggestion. Well, let me use that as a segue, and I'll explore that, whether we can build that into the magnet presentation. I've handed out the proposed work session schedule. I'm kicking myself, because the list I had kept and was working with School Board Services on had attributions on it, and I didn't ask them to do this, but of which board member I'd requested each one. But let me just sort of tick through these, because what I'd like to ask you all to do, if you could, is in the next week or two or three weeks, as you think of other things that need to be calendared, let Ms. McGill know. So we're starting with the school board retreat on August 15. I don't know the location for that yet. We'll try to find somewhere fun and interesting and different, as we try to every year. Let me use this as an opportunity too, to ask you to please start to get in your topics you'd like covered to Ms. McGill and to School Board Services as soon as possible so we can have a productive retreat. It's anticipated, you know what, I forget, we didn't move the timing on that one, the retreat will be 4:00 to 10:00 p.m. So where you see that on magnet schools, that should actually be moved up one road to the retreat. So just as we've done the last two, three years, unless you all would like to do it differently, we'll start that at 4:00, and we'll try to conclude it by 10:00 o'clock. Then on August 20, we have magnet schools. That's what I call a follow-up or circling back work session. I don't anticipate, from conversations, I don't anticipate we'll be making any weighty decisions there. But I know Dr. Jenkins and her staff have been hard at work at looking at our magnet programs. We started this effort back in February, March, and this is a time to circle back. And we'll also look at whether that's a time also to look at innovation schools and other, the other student choice options, or if we need a separate one on that. Then we have the passive distribution of materials work session. I think, Mrs. Robinson, you may have asked for that, and other board members, and frankly, that's one I want to do myself. That's on August 29. Then we have teacher recruitment. I think Ms. Moore may have asked for that one. And minority achievement initiative. I know that's an issue of real concern to a number of board members, including Mrs. Gordon. I'd ask for that, so that's on September 3. We've had to move up a little bit, our charter school applications. We've got to get all those done by October 1. I don't know what the status is right now of how many we're expecting, but I know at one time, I think the number was somewhere between 20-plus, 20 to 25. So we've lined up three board meetings to do those. Those will be 4:00 to 10:00. We may not do all three of those. We'll see how many actually come to fruition and come before us, but we've got to have the time set aside. And then we have October 1, expanding language offerings. And forgive me, I cannot remember who asked for that one. I think that, was that you? That was Ms. Flynn. Thank you, Ms. Flynn. And then we're following back on an issue of concern to a number of board members, school maintenance. And on that, you know, we're going to talk again on the maintenance issues. I'm hearing more from board members on that issue. We're also going to have a discussion, it's my intention also, on the pilot project and see how that's coming and evolving in October. October 10, digital curriculum, that's a recent ad. Again, forgive me, I can't recall who asked for that, but a number of board members have asked for an update on the digital curriculum pilot and other issues. October 17, the ESE Evergreen Report, that's a report that was commissioned to evaluate our ESE programs. October 24, the ELL, our Metis report. Metis is a group that was commissioned to do an evaluation of our ELL programs. And then we're, I know there's a big gap there, but we're circling back on January 16 on our CTE programs, their alignment, their delivery, and a whole host of issues that fall under that rubric. We move that until after the New Year, because we need to give Ms. Daire's replacement, Mr. Armbruster, time really, to get his plans Armbruster, time really to get his plans in place and give him adequate time to report back to us on what we're doing there. And there's so much there as well because of the new career pathways, diplomas, and other options that we have. So I know a lot of our review are excited about that. I've added to this list tonight. I'm going to ask Mrs. McGill to get scheduled also mitigation, CEA concurrency, that issue that we touched on tonight, and then we'll look at innovation schools. So if I've forgotten anything, speak up now or let Ms. McGill know because we keep a pretty good list, and she does as well, but we may have forgotten some. Ms. Moore?
I just wanted to ask you, Mr. Chair, I think the timing is good on the digital curriculum that we've been talking about in communications and working this for a while, and had a conversation with Mr. Eugene earlier that what Orange County Public Schools was doing was more curriculum-driven digital instruction more than what we're even seeing across the country. And part of what we discussed in communications was trying to do that where we had open houses at each of our district pilot schools. And so I particularly like this date that we have, and I'm just curious if that would give us enough time to sort of coordinate the work session with whatever we're going to do for the community, whether it was open houses at the pilot schools. I don't know if we're ready at that time, but it just seems that that would be an appropriate time to try and make that work. Because it's, and of course, I just got back from New York talking to my brother-in-law who's a science teacher in New York, and he said to me, I hope he's not watching this program. Probably not. He didn't quite understand why digital would have any, you know, or a device or an iPad would have anything to do with how he was teaching science. And I thought, oh, no. And so I thought, you know, here's someone who teaches science and his students 99% pass the region's exam. New York, and his students are doing well. But, you know, if my brother-in-law didn't understand it, I think that's a concern that the taxpayers, the parents and the grandparents, that we really have a hands-on experience to understand how these devices are geared to the curriculum. And so certainly, I think that, whatever your thoughts are, if we could somehow marry those two ideas together in October. Thank you.
Yeah, we will definitely do that. And also, and I'm sort of saying this out loud in the hopes that Ms. McGill, I know you will write this down because I know me, I'll forget it by the fall. That's also an opportunity to address a topic you asked us to agenda, which is the district's Bring Your Own Device policy, which I think you had brought to the table as well. So we want to cover not just the pilots at that, but also the Bring Your Own Device issue and policies at that meeting. Ms. Cadel?
A couple of things. On the digital, I think we should be able to share what we're doing with the coalition probably in November after that report. So we probably need to send a request to Chairman Wheeler to be the agenda. They allow one speaker per meeting, and I said something to Chairman Wheeler about November. He said, well, October, and I said, no, we really need to get it up and going so we know how we're doing on it. So I'm requesting that we go ahead and put the request in to be the presentation for the November 2013 coalition meeting. Also, something that Ms. Moore said, I was at a luncheon today, and one of our big challenges, and I've said this at the board table before, but it was reinforced to me today at the We have a segment of our community who are voters, who don't think technology is important. They don't think that children need to have technology to be successful. And I don't know, I don't know how you bridge that gap. I'm not quite sure what you show them or what you do to bridge that. And I'm almost thinking, but I don't know, you know, it happened this afternoon, and I've kind of been thinking about it. It's almost like as we're starting our community engagement process for the fall, it's almost like we need to have a video or something that we can show exactly what it looks like to learn digitally. And, you know, some people have iPads and, you know, they know they can hit the word and get the definition for the word, or they can hit the thesaurus. But we have a lot of people that don't realize that you can do that. And when I was talking to the people, I said to them, I said, well, do you have grandchildren? And they said, yes. And I said, have you ever watched your grandchildren with an iPhone or an iPad? I mean, because I don't understand how an 11- or 12- or 14-month-old can take an iPhone and the next thing you know, they've unlocked it and they're moving things. And I don't know, I don't know if they're wired, you know, I just, I can't figure out how they know what to do with these devices. Except that, as adults, we have fear that we're going to lose something. You know, if you push the wrong button, it's going to disappear and, oh, my goodness, can I find it? Children don't have that fear. It's like, eh, I'll just keep pushing a button until it comes back. And having watched them, yeah, if you push enough buttons, at some point, it does come back. So I don't know how, you know, I don't know how we get to that point. I know that I have had conversations before, and I think I told you all, when I had my knee replaced, I was at Orlando Orthopedics. And my doctor walked in with an iPad and said, here's your knee, it looks really, really good. And when he took the x-ray of it that my knee needed to replace, he said, here's your arthritic knee, this is why you can't walk, and you need to have it replaced. And he comes in and he pulls up Joey Cadel, and he shows me what I looked like before and what I looked like at six weeks. And so that is where we're going. You know, that is, that is the future for all of us. But I'm not quite sure how many people have had that opportunity. I mean, when you look at the requirements to have digital medical records, when you go in the hospital now, they don't walk in with a chart and fill you out. They may walk in with a piece of paper to write down your vitals, but then they've gone to a computer out in the hallway and they've put it in there. And if you go into the emergency room, they can pull up your whole history. They know how many times you've been there, they know what you've been treated for. And so I don't know how we get that age bracket that doesn't understand that technology's not going away. And we can only, we can only prepare children for the future if they know how to work the technology because we don't even know what it's going to look like five years from now. We don't know what it's going to look like in two years. If you look at how fast tablets have changed, and you look at the new advertisements, now somebody's got a tablet you can put underwater. I'm not sure I want to swim underwater with my tablet, but, you know, that's the new thing they're marketing. So for what it's worth, I think we've got a lot of work to figure that out.
Thank you, Mrs. Robinson.
I just want to point out, we were discussing the coalition meeting, there isn't a November one in Orlando. Ms. Cadel, it's in Tampa at that point, at FSBA, so that won't really work, so we might want to rethink that date, but just want to point out.
We usually don't meet in December. We'll have to figure it out. I just think if we're trying to present in October, that I don't know that we've had enough under our belt, so maybe January is when we need to do it. Because we want to make sure when we make a presentation that we are, that, you know, Mr. Eugene can come in and talk about why we're looking at all the different platforms, why we're looking at the reliability and how quick can they be replaced. I mean, I think there's, I think there's a lot of things that we're doing in these digital pilots that, when I talk to other school board members, they haven't even thought of it. You know, they haven't even thought, like, what do I do when I get all of these? The biggest conversation I hear is, are we going to lease or are we going to buy? And how often do you have to replace it? And there are a lot of school boards, that's all they're thinking about. They haven't figured out that when they break, what do you do with them? They haven't figured out, how do you keep them charged? If the children take them home and they bring them back not being charged, what do you do? So there, you know, there's just a lot of moving parts in all of it.
Ms. Gould?
I don't know if we ever do this, but it may be worth on the education penetration. I've been to a couple of rotaries, and that seems to be a good target market for our message. There's a lot of empty nesters in Rotary, and they have a lot of misconceptions about what this digital information is, and it's, I think, probably some of the other wonderful clubs out there like Kiwanis and some of those others as well, Elks, maybe even the American Legion. They may be something we want to target for Speakers Bureau and go out with our talking points, and do that, and even engage maybe some of the staff in helping with that because that is really where I get the most questions, where we can probably penetrate the message these. I mean, I get a lot of one-off questions, but when I've gone to those meetings and been with my friends there, they have the most questions, not only about the digital, but about Common Core and what it really is and is not. And, and so that would be a good place, I think, and maybe formalizing some kind of a communication strategy over the next few months so that we could launch it in the fall as people reengage in their organizations, and even some of the women's clubs and things. And that would kind of tee things up for 2014, too.
Yeah, it's a great suggestion, and I just want to add to that. First of all, I think that with your indulgence, Ms. Moore, we really need to do it in Communications Committee meeting right after July and in August to talk about some of these issues. And, you know, the last meeting that Ms. Moore chaired of the Communications Committee, I just want to reiterate, and I know I sound like a broken record on this, board members, but we've really got to get a good slick entertaining, I think that's important, informative presentation in the can for us to all go out and give, and we need to make sure that every board member is briefed on it and understands it. And I really think that, and, you know, because frankly, we're talking digital technology here, but I'm thinking also that the sales tax extension as well. And, you know, we've got to have a script that, and I know I'm stating the obvious to you, but we really do need to have a presentation that's tailor-made for a 10-minute presentation, a 20-minute presentation where we can all start to go out and get it. And then I would suggest, it's just a suggestion, it's going to be a lot of work for our communications staff, but, you know, I've just learned over the years that to be methodical is the best way to go, and I really think that, to take your suggestion, Ms. Gould, that we should approach it like a Speakers Bureau, and we should get our professional staff at work calling and lining up presentations, because I can tell you as a former Kiwanis Speaker Chair, they're always desperate for speakers, and the rotaries are, and the Elks are, and I know most--
They're lining up for us.
They are. But we need to have somebody lining those up for us, and then, you know, we have a pool of eight of us plus staff to go out and give those presentations. The other thing I would ask, suggest, and this is going to sound like a heavy lift, but I really think it's an absolute must for the sales tax and the digital communication or digital technology. But we have 185 schools. I think that it is imperative that over the next nine months, that a board member hit every one of the 185 schools, PTA SAC committees, and that we put the machine into action. And by that, I mean, make sure that the word goes out with a connect orange, bookbag inserts, whatever, and that we slowly work through our area soup to get to every school and make a presentation on the sales tax. Because frankly, we have the best advantage in the world in terms of grassroots in that we have all those 185 PTA SACs and teachers and other groups to talk about both the digital technology and the sales tax. Ms. Cadel?
Well, another elephant that's in the room that we are going to have to figure out, but let me go ahead, Common Core. And it is, as being on the Executive Committee of FSBA, we had a meeting with Commissioner Bennett two weeks ago, and we had an hour with him. And it's kind of two things that are kind of getting muddled together. Standards, there needs to be the conversation on standards, and then the testing of the standards is over here. Right now, the Commissioner has said, within the next 90 to 120 days, he is going to announce what that assessment is going to look like. That there is a lot of talk going on right now between Park and College Board, and there is, well, number one, he assured us, because the first thing we said to him is, there's a lot of concern in the community among parents that our children's data is going to be used, sold nationally. He assured us that the data that is being collected with Common Core or with the new assessments would stay in the state of Florida. So then the question I got was, well, how are you going to get around race to the top? I don't know that answer at that, at this point, but we need to, as we're looking all of the, at this, because when we go out, there are going to be people that are going to be asking about Common Core. And here, and those of you who were at the Central Florida Partnership meeting, the thing that seems to resonate the most, and I don't know that I shared it with you before, there was a, there was a woman who was an officer's wife, and she knew of another wife who, they were transferred to Connecticut. The child was in California in second grade and went to Connecticut in third grade. Well, when she was in California, California taught you how to tell time on an old-fashioned watch in third grade. But when she moved to Connecticut, Connecticut teaches you how to tell time on a watch in second grade. So the child lost, didn't, never got that skill. So mom presents the child with a watch, like for her 12th birthday, and the child looks at mom and says, I don't know how to tell time. And, you know, mom's like, what do you mean, you don't need to, you don't know how to tell time? She said, well, I can read it on that digital thing. Well, as mom started looking, it was a second grade, it was a third grade skill in California, it was a second grade skill in Connecticut, and so she lost it. So when you kind of talk about everyone being, teaching the same skill in the same grade, that seems to make a little more sense. I mean, that kind of took all of this and brought it down to a story that I could understand. So for whatever it's worth, when we're looking at all of this, I think that is the other thing that we're moving towards, and as the Superintendent so eloquently says, we've got children who have been taught in K through 2, Common Core standards, they're getting ready to go to third grade, and the Common Core standards don't necessarily line up to FCAT. So they've been taught these new standards, but how are we going to evaluate in third grade whether or not they've accomplished it? So I hope I've said that accurately.
Yeah, and the Department of Education is very sensitive to that fact. The plan has been and continues to be that third through eight teach a blending or a combination of the FCAT standards along with Common Core. They should be relatively similar. Think of Common Core as delving deeper, standards being very topical in comparison. And so the expectation is that third through eight have a blended model for their instruction so that they are still prepared to take the FCAT one more year, and then the conversion becomes complete to Common Core as Park is supposed to be ready by 14, 15.
Ms. Flynn?
Yes, the FSBA offered a really nice webinar series on Common Core. In one hour, I listened to one, and it gave a lot of really good points to communicate with the community. I put some of the blips on my Facebook, and I recommend it. I don't know, I don't think they're going to repeat them, but possibly the PowerPoint might be available. I'm not sure. Mrs. Cadel would probably know. But there's one more left, and I would suggest--
It's tomorrow morning, I think.
It might be. It's on my calendar. I take them one day at a time, but I took one of them, and they were good.
Mr. Chairman, and I hate not to mention, even on our website, for folks who really aren't interested in an hour-long session but want to get a good--
aren't interested in an hour-long session but want to get a good understanding so we can demystify, get rid of some of the rumors regarding communism, we can still, we can still refer them to our website. That very brief video that we've shown in several instances really does help give the concept of what Common Core is all about. And if, and if people aren't interested in an in-depth session, if they would at least click on our website and look at that, and refer people to our website, that gives them at least what conceptually Common Core is all about. And then we can certainly, when we get ready for our roadshow, I think we have to include several items, perhaps separate items, but we need to be able to speak to Common Core because it will come up. You'll have some individuals who have been told some of these myths, and they will think they are reality. So we need to work on that as well, Mr. Chairman.
Well, I'm laughing, because if you have a sense of humor, I feel like, I felt comforted to know that we're only dealing with the fringes, because when anything gets equated to communism, that's usually a pretty good sign that you're not dealing with the mainstream, especially that particular flyer that we all got. And I know you all know what I'm talking about. It was actually humorous. One thing I would suggest, though, if you look at the, just an idea for Dylan in the back of the room, the state of the schools touches on a lot of these issues, and you could take that 30-minute presentation and collapse it down to 15, and use that as sort of a scaffold for, for building a roadshow presentation, because we touched on Common Core in a six-inch way, and we touched on the sales tax extension, and we touched on the digital pilot project. So we don't have to recreate the wheel. Ms. Gould.
This is kind of a sidebar on the Common Core concept, but at the Marzano Conference last week, one of the sessions I sat in, they were talking about the implementation of PARK, and that there's a choice on whether it's a year-end exam or if it's an installment exam. And there were a few states that have chosen the installment exam, but early indicators are that they're more successful. Do we have a choice in the district? No.
State-level.
We'll choose. So even if we say PARK along the way, if they say it's year-end, we have to do it year-end? We can't.
It's a state-level decision.
Okay, that's, for anybody who listens to this, the superintendent said that's a state-level decision. So we are, once again, having that legislated, even if it's not the right decision.
Okay. That was a great discussion. Board members, anything else for the good of the order? All right, with that, we are adjourned. Everybody have a great July.
I'm a student at Harvard.
I'm IT.
Caltech.
Columbia.
Our advantage, support at home, plus great teachers and programs at Orange County Public Schools. Check out what's available for your child.
There are magnet programs, advanced placement and honors classes, and guidance counselors who help us choose the right courses.
There are dual enrollment classes with Valencia College, so students can earn college credit while in high school.
OCPS has programs for every type of learner, pre-kindergarten through adult.
You won't believe what you can do through Orange County Public Schools.
For more information, visit the website at ocp.net or call 407-317-3200.
Here's a question for every parent out there. If you could fast-forward 20 years to see how your kid's doing in life, would you do it? Well, we can't time travel yet, but we can see the future better with the new Common Core state standards in our schools. They set clear goals for every stage of learning, and they're the same for everyone, no matter what zip code you're in. So you can be sure your student is really grasping what she needs to know to get to graduation and beyond. Find out how it all works at commoncoreworks.org.